I'd like to call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Harlingen City Commission, which has been duly posted to order, and at this time I'd like to call upon Commissioner T. Yulhorn to lead us in an invitation.
Please join me in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you today to give you honor and praise. We recognize that you are the source of all that is good, and you are the source of all of our blessings. Thank you for all the gifts of this life that you have bestowed upon us. We thank you for the freedom and opportunity to gather together this day. We ask for your blessing upon this meeting. We ask that you would guide and direct our meeting so that it is full of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. Thank you for helping to guide our work on behalf of our neighbors and our community. In your name we pray.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. We're glad to have all of you here at our meeting tonight. And the first item on the agenda is going to be sort of a fun item, and that's the recognition of the City of Harlingen Vital Statistics Department recipient of the five-star service award. So, I guess I get to do that, or is...
I think that's you.
I get to do it all by myself?
All by yourself.
All right. I'm glad you did this all by myself.
I'll go out there with you wherever you want.
The Vital Statistics Department.
Let me know.
It's the recognition of our Vital Statistics Department, Diana Vargas, Diana Vargas, the local registrar, Lisa Demansky, our deputy registrar, and Amy Funt, the deputy registrar, and supervisor of our health department. And so, the City of Harlingen Vital Statistics Office was one of the recipients of the 2015 Vital Statistics Award. Five-star award began in 1999, and the City of Harlingen has met the criteria year after year. Harlingen Vital Statistics filed 3,225 birth certificates within one business day, and 1,241 death certificates within 10 days. More than 500 cities applied for this award, and only 22 cities met the criteria. So, it's a great honor and privilege for us to be part of this presentation, to present this five-star award of excellence to our Vital Statistics Department. Congratulations. And so, you know, I thought you had a really hard job working downstairs for the city manager, and the mayor, and the commissioner, and all that goes on with all of that, but it sounds like you got a pretty hard job over there. So, we are very proud of you, and all of your staff, and the health department for all the great work that you all do, day in, day out, to make the city more smoothly, and provide great service to our community, to our citizens, and we really appreciate it. And, you know, we always wish you'd join me in saying this, you guys are, you guys make us feel good, because you do such a great job in everything that you do. So, again, and all of you, congratulations.
Thank you.
Item two is the Neighborhood Clean Sweep held Saturday, January 9, 2016, from West Fillmore and West Lincoln, and South J Street, and South M Street, and District 4.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. I'm here to let you all know that we had a cleanup on January 9. Let me see. Yeah, okay. We had it on West Fillmore, on West Lincoln, between South J and South M Street, from 8:00 to 12:00. We picked up 2.53 tons of debris and 51 tires. You can see Mr. DeLuca and his family there, and Mrs. DeLaRosa, Commissioner DeLaRosa's wife. Volunteers hard at work, had construction materials, household goods. And I also wanted to say thank you to the DeLuca family again for helping us so much. Also, one of their friends, Anna Gonzalez. Also, Mr. Officer Carmona helped us with it also. And Commissioner DeLaRosa and his wife were also helping us for that cleanup. I want to say thank you very much. Our next cleanup is going to be on February 13. Anybody's interested will be at Pittman, Lozano, Kelly, in that area there. Any questions?
Okay. Do we have some certificates to present?
Yes, sir.
So, we'll present those. So, I was going to ask the commissioner to join me in presenting these, but he's getting one too, sorry. No, go on over here. Let's ask Ray DeLuca and your family here, we'd like you to come up here, and be recognized. You know, we think it's just so great that you all, that you all do this month after month, and we're so grateful, so grateful to you for always participating. So, we've got, we've got your buddies here, but we want to, we have Anna Edith Gonzalez.
As a matter of fact, I made her two, because I wasn't sure how to spell her first name with either two N's or one N', just to be on the same side.
Pick the one that you want. Ruben DeLaRosa, the commissioner's wife, and Commissioner Ruben DeLaRosa, Elise Zoe Lindes, and Sal Formosa.
That's Alfrus Carmona, yes.
All right. Again, thank, you know, I can't say it enough times, I say it all the time when we do these, but these are really important events, really important to keep our city clean. It makes it, it makes it attractive for people to invest in our community, for people to live in our community, for people to visit our community. If we don't have a clean community, nobody's going to want to do any of those things in our city. So, this is an important thing that you all do, and we congratulate you, and thank you for your service in the city, Harlingen. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item three is the approval of the minutes for the regular meeting of December 16, 2015. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Hearing done, we'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
Move we approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Supposed, like, signed, motion carries. Consent Agenda Items 4A through C.
Mayor, I make the motion we accept consent agenda 4A, 4B, 4C as presented.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Supposed, like, signed, motion carries. Item five, consider to take action to approve the First Amendment to the Economic Development Agreement with Strategic Behavioral Health Development Psychiatric Hospital in Harlingen. Rodell.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Commissioners. Strategic Behavioral Health is building the Palm Behavioral Health Center off of Victoria Lane and Hail Drive. When they started, a little over a year ago, they had plans to build a 72-bed hospital that would treat not only behavioral problems, but mental health issues, and something that is lacking in our community quite a bit in terms of healthcare. There was such a demand for their services as they kept doing their design work, that they figured out that their building was too small. So, they started redesigning, added 22 beds, which is about 10,000 square feet to their building, and at least another million dollars in investment, and then the rains came. And so, they have been progressing as fast as they can to build that facility, but because of delays in weather and because of the change in the design, they are behind their scheduled timeframe and are asking for an extension on that timeframe to deliver, and thus, an extension on the incentive package, which was granted by both the EDC and the city, by 10 months basically to October. And that's kind of the story, so...
We had executed a 380 agreement in June 2014 with developer. The 380 agreement stipulated incentive package of $200,000 under certain, as certain milestones. One of them was the investment of $12 million and a January 1, 2016 completion date. Obviously, with what they had just told you, he's not going to meet that date. He's asking for an extension to October 1, 2016, but he's also increased their investment to $13 million. That's the first milestone, and considering all the rain that we've had and developments going on out there, we are recommending approval of the amendment.
Is there a motion to approve the amendment?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I had a feeling this would be a pretty easy sell because of the significance of the project and the progress that's been made. And, you know, there's a song about it never rains in Southern California. Well, it used to never rain in Harlingen, but it sure did last year.
Last year did.
Anyway, we're happy to support this project and help in this way. It's a great project for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know, six is a public hearing, consider an ordinance on first reading to amend the specific use permit issued to William Vance Durham to allow an expansion of the adult business gun shop in a general retail district to include Suite 1 located at 117 East Port Court, bearing a legal description of Lot 5, Block 1 of East Port Center. African is William Vance Durham.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. The applicant is requesting to amend his existing specific use permit that was issued to him back in May of 2014. And this is not the slide here. Back in May of 2014, it's on East Port Court. He was approved for a gun shop business. He's basically proposing to add on to Suite Number 1. He's currently operating on a Suite 2. The additional space would provide about 1,100 square feet, mainly to be used for storage and for a workshop area. The hours of operation would continue to remain the same from, which would be Monday through Friday, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The request was reviewed and approved by the appropriate departments. A public hearing was conducted by the P&amp;Z Commission. There's no concerns addressed at the meeting. Staff and P&amp;Z Commissioner recommend approval subject to the applicant providing and maintaining the required parking and landscaping, obtaining his proper permits, and compliance from the appropriate departments. I'll take any questions, and the applicant is also present for any questions.
That's not the right slide, right?
That's not the right slide now.
There you go.
That's it. That's the slide. He's mainly moving over from Suite 2, he's going to move over to Suite 1 to have two suites. The total size of the building would be about a little over 2,200 square feet, and this is behind, this is on East Port Court, directly behind Dairy Queen, on the loop.
Item A is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing, if anyone would like to speak for or against the amendment to this SUP. All right. Stand at the podium, please state your name and residence.
Yeah, on the shop at 284 Atthe Spunmas. I was just wondering, if he's going to take that one because it's bigger, and he says he's going to use it for storage, does that mean that, like, for the, what is it, appraisal district will go count, how much inventory do they have? Are they going to put more guns in there? And if it's right behind Dairy Queen, did they have any grunts about it? I mean, you know, guns are guns, and people are people, and God forbid if complete chaos is there, and you never know. I, I don't think it's a good idea until you do or take some kind of opinion from the surrounding area, number one, and number two, whether they're going to have more inventory on guns when they've got so many guns in there already, and number three, if any complaints have gone. Bye-bye.
Mayor, just to respond to your question, we did notify property owners within a 200-foot radius, and we received no complaints, and requested amendment, and the additional space is mainly going to provide storage space and workshop for the subject business.
All right. Does anyone else like to speak for or against the amendment of this SUP? Hearing done on close of the public hearing, item B, which is consider to take action to approve an ordinance on first reading to amend the specific use permit issued to William Vance Durham to allow an expansion of the adult business gun shop at the above-mentioned described property. I ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance, number 7-27, of the City of Harlingen, to amend the existing specific use permit, ordinance 14-17, for an adult business gun shop issued to William Vance Durham for 117 East Port Court, Suite 2, to allow for the expansion of the adult business to include Suite 1, bearing a legal description of Lot 5, Block 1, East Port Center subdivision, subject to, one, providing and maintaining the required all-three parking in accordance with city regulations; two, obtaining and maintaining the proper state and general permits; three, continuing to comply with the requirements administered by planning and zoning, building inspections, fire prevention, and police departments for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, signed, motion carries. Item seven, consider, or rather, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading to rezonate from residential single-family R1 District to Light Industry LI District for 15.992 acres out of Block 2, FZ Bishop Subdivision of the LW and WT Campbell Lands, located on the north side of Roosevelt Road, west of Interstate 69. African is Rodell Garza, Caraplanes, Campbell Land.
Mayor, Commissioners, the applicant is requesting to rezonate the subject property from residential single-family to Light Industry District to allow for a five-lot business park on the subject property. As you can see, it's located on the north side of Roosevelt, just west of I-69E. This is the subject property, you can see here, it's about a little over 15 acres. Generally, the proposed business park would include this subject property plus these two tracks to the east of the property, which already is owned Light Industry District. If you look at it from, this is a proposed business park, which is, again, would be a five-lot business park. The western seven acres of this property would actually be used as a retention pond with walking trails, which provide a buffer from the industrial part of the property to the residential district. This property would have to be subdivided prior to obtaining the building permit. If you look at it on an aerial view here, it would generally conclude these three tracks here, and of course, the business park would generally come up to about lower part of this property, as well as these two tracks. Again, the remaining western seven acres would be a retention pond, with walking trails would provide a buffer from the residential to the industrial use. As you can see, the subject property is generally developed with industrial use to the east of the subject property. This is the FedEx Service Center to the south. We have the Carter-Salvo-Chandler. We have storage units. To the south, you have a single-family residential use. Directly south of this property is actually outside the city limits, and to the north is actually in pre-medical city limits, and this is the Lazy Palms subdivision. If you're looking at a street view, this is a view from the south. You see the property is currently vacant. If you're looking at it from the east, and of course, from the west. The future land use map does show this property as a residential medium density, so it's not generally consistent with the future land use map, but it is consistent with the Light Industry District that we have to the east of the subject property, as well as the land use that you have to the east, and as well as to the southeast of the subject property. As mentioned, for this subject property, on the zoning map, the applicant is only, the proposed business park would only encroach part of this property. The remaining seven acres would, again, would provide a buffer with a retention pond and walking trails. We did notify property owners within a 200-foot radius. We did get two calls from the subject, from the property owners. One was against the request, mainly because they didn't want any development in the area. They wanted to see the property remain vacant the way it is. The other property owner had no objections to the request of rezoning. They were actually happy that they're going to, or pleased that they're going to put a retention pond with walking trails. Public hearing was conducted by P&amp;Z Commission. There's no concerns. Staff and P&amp;Z Commissioner are recommending approvals and requests. Take any questions, and the applicant is also present for questions.
All right. Does anybody have any questions? I'll go to item A, which is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing, if anyone would like to speak for or against this rezoning. Hearing done on close of the public hearing, item B, which is consider to take action to approve an ordinance on first reading for rezonate request at the above-mentioned described property. I ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance, City Harlingen zoning from residential single-family R1 District to Light Industry LI District for 15.992 acres out of Block 2, FZ Bishop Subdivision of the LW and WT Campbell Lands, located on the north side of Roosevelt Road, west of Interstate 69 and 80, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to foregoing.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved. Second.
Motion of the second, and any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Supposed, like, signed, motion carries. Item A, public hearing, consider an ordinance on first reading for a specific use permit to allow 55 storage buildings in a general GR district located at 1801 West Lincoln, bearing a legal description of Lot 1A of the amended map of Lot 1A, 6 and 7, Walmart subdivision number 2, African Paul Estrada. Mayor, Walmart.
Mayor, Commissioners, the applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow 55 storage units to be mainly used for seasonal merchandise for Walmart. Generally, those storage units are in size eight feet by 40 feet in length and about eight feet in height. This is generally a picture of what they look like. They're applying for 55, but they reduced the amount of storage units right now to about 34 on the site, and they're currently moving them out. The request was reviewed by the appropriate departments. We have no concerns subject to complying with appropriate departments. We did notify property owners within a 200-foot radius. We did get one complaint from one of the surrounding property owners. That's why it's being brought to you, because generally, when someone applies for a specific use permit for storage containers, those are generally processed administratively unless a complaint is received, that the date is advertised. In this case, we got one complaint, which is the reason it's before you. Again, this is other views of the storage containers. The applicant has been advised that staff would be recommending that the containers would have to be removed, that the SUP would be for 60 days, and they'd have to be removed. The applicant is in agreement with that condition, and is currently moving them out at this time. Staff and P&amp;Z Commissioner recommend approval of those specific use permits, subject to the SUP being limited to 60 days. I'll take any questions, and the applicant is also present for questions.
So, I read the minutes from the P&amp;Z meeting, and I understood that it was for just 60 days only, but it sounds like that they're going to come back and petition after that sometime during that 60 days and ask for an SUP to allow them.
At this point, they're only going to have for 60 days, so if they do decide in the future, assuming we still have that ordinance in place, they would have to reapply again if they were to bring in any new containers in the future, like for the Christmas holidays, for example.
So, they're going to all disappear at the end of 60 days?
Right.
They're going somewhere else?
Yes, that's correct.
Not to the parking lot or to another area?
No, they're starting to remove as, at this point, so there will no longer be storage containers.
What you wanted to do was come in and talk to staff about what to do, about possibly allowing some there, but that would involve a totally different situation with probably construction permits or something totally different.
I mean, I thought that someone told them that maybe with screening, or fences, or shrubbery, and I wasn't sure, because it was a little ambiguous about what the motion actually was at the final part of the P&amp;Z hearing.
It was 60 days. That was the condition.
And the current number, 55, they're currently less than 55 there.
There's about 34 of this.
And it's a fluid number.
Right.
And then two months going to zero.
Right, correct.
And that area between where they stack them on their property, there's kind of the green belt in there, is that a right-of-way or?
To the, I guess it'd be to the west of that property.
In the other property.
That's irrigation district right-of-way to the west.
Is the canal underground or not?
It's underground. Or it's, yes. It's above ground, I'm sorry. Above ground.
All right. And they're satisfied with removing them after the 60 days?
Yes, sir, they are. Right.
Okay. All right. Item A is a public hearing. I'll go to that, open the public hearing, if anyone would like to speak for or against this ordinance for an SUP. Hearing done on close of the public hearing, and go to item B, which is to consider and take action to approve an ordinance on first reading for a specific use permit to allow 55 storage buildings at the above-mentioned described property. Ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance, number 7-27, of the City of Harlingen, to issue specific use permit for Paul Estrada, store manager, care of Walmart, number 0595, to allow 55 storage containers in a general retail district located at 1801 West Lincoln, bearing a legal description of Lot 1-A of the amended plot, Lot 1A, 6 and 7, Walmart subdivision number 2, subject to, one, the SUP would be limited to 60 days; two, maintaining existing parking and landscaping in accordance with city regulations; and three, complying with the requirements administered by the planning and zoning, building inspections, and all convention departments, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to foregoing.
Can I ask a procedural question before we vote? They're just going to be there 60 days, right? Wouldn't it normally be the job, or wouldn't it normally be the way to do it, would be for the inspectors to say, you've got 60 days to remove these, rather than go through this SUP and everything, or is that the standard way we do it?
Standard way we do it.
I happen to be at the meeting, and what's being asked is for an ordinance so that we can eliminate this.
Right.
I happen, I don't know if the minutes really reflect, but I happened to go because Walmart is in my district, and I was kind of interested in how this was going to go.
All right. Well, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So the...
Motion of the second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Supposed, like, signed, motion carries. Obviously, we want to work with our, the businesses in our communities. We know that they have needs, but we also, we need to address issues like the aesthetics of the area, because like, it's good for business for the area to look cleaned up, so I appreciate the staff working on this issue, and I think, hopefully finding some common ground between these businesses and the city's overall desire to keep the appearance of the city looking good. Item nine, consider to take action to grant a variance to the City of Harlingen subdivision ordinance, number 7-28, section 4.1.2D, also known as the Code of Ordinances, chapter 156.041B4, with regards to lot size, proposed Lazy Palms subdivision Phase 1B replant, Block 5, consisting of 0.90 acres of land, being all lots 24 through 30. Block 5, Lazy Palms subdivision Phase 1B, located at North Bamboo Palm Drive, the applicant's Kevin Campbell.
Mayor, Commissioners, the applicant is requesting a variance to the minimum required lot size for single-family residential lots in the Lazy Palms subdivision Phase 1B. This variance would comprise of seven lots, would generally be these lots here along Bamboo Park, Bamboo Palm Circle. When this was planted back in 2001, there was a fence encroaching, which wasn't addressed. At this point, the adjacent property owner, the abutting property owner, has a fence which is encroaching 10 feet into this property, and he's claiming adverse possession of that property. This is the plant of those, which includes those seven lots, and the encroachment, again, is about 10 feet into those properties. So, when these lots were planted, they were 50 by 120. Now, these lots would generally be about 50 by 110, which is a little over 5,500 square feet, which still allows for a single-family residential house. There is a case history where a similar variance was granted back in 2001, and actually, the lot was actually smaller, it was about 5,200 square feet. So, there's a case history, one has been granted in the same subdivision. This is a closer look at the subject property, and this is the subject property where the fence is currently encroaching. The lots would generally be in this area here. And again, there'd be, these are the subject property. Request went before the P&amp;Z Commission. P&amp;Z Commission is recommending approval of variance. Again, the hardship in this case is that, one, you already have a case history, one has been granted, plus the adverse possession affects these properties from being sold and developed and getting a clear title of the property, which is the reason they're applying for the variance and replating the subject lots. I'll take any questions on the item.
What's the status of the adverse possession case? Are they in court over that? Have they done anything, or is he just threatening to do it, the Jason Lando?
It's my understanding he's threatening to do that, and their attorney advised him that the subject property owner does have a good case to retain that property, so in order to proceed with the selling of that property, getting a clear title.
This was subdivided way back when?
2001.
And the appraisal district probably has the lot sizes, you would think, on there.
Right.
You'd be paying tax on them.
Right, correct. Open the public hearing, is anyone like to speak for or against this ordinance for an SUP. Hearing now, I'll close the public hearing and go to item B, which is to consider and take action to approve an ordinance on first reading for a specific use permit to allow fifty-five storage buildings that people mentioned described property. Ask the city attorney to read the caption.
Ordinance meaning the zoning ordinance number seven dash twenty-seven of the City Harlingen to issue specific use permit for store manager, care of Walmart, number zero five nine five, to allow fifty-five storage containers in a general retail district located at eighteen-oh-one West Lincoln, bearing a legal description of lot one dash A of the amended plot of lot one A six and seven, Walmart subdivision number two, subject to one, the SUP would be limited to sixty days, two, maintaining existing parking and landscaping in accordance with city regulations, and three, complying with the requirements administered by the planning and zoning building inspections of all convention departments, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to foregoing.
Can I ask a procedural question before we vote? They're just going to be there sixty days, right? Wouldn't it normally be the job, or wouldn't it normally be the way to do it would be for the inspectors to say, you've got sixty days to remove these rather than go through this SUP and everything, or is that the standard way we do it?
Standard way we do it.
I happen to be at the meeting and what's being asked us for an ordinance so that we can eliminate this.
Right.
I happen to, I don't know what the minutes were, totally reflect, but I happen to go because Walmart is in my district, and I was kind of interested how this was going to go.
All right, well, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Motion of the second, is there any other discussion? All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Obviously, we want to work with our, the businesses in our communities, we know that they have needs, but we also, we need to address issues like the aesthetics of the area, because like it's good for business for the area to look cleaned up, so I appreciate the staff working on this issue, and I think hopefully finding some common ground between these businesses and the city's overall desire to keep the appearance of the city looking good. Item nine, consider take action to grant a variance to the City Harlingen subdivision ordinance number seven dash twenty-eight, section four point one point two D, also known as the code ordinances, chapter one fifty-six point oh four one D four, with regards to lot size, opposed Lacy Palm subdivision phase one B replant, block five, consisting of zero point nine oh acres of land, being all lots twenty-four through thirty, block five, Lacy Palm subdivision phase one B, located at North Bamboo Palm Drive, the applicant's Kevin Campbell.
Mayor Commissioners, the applicant is requesting a variance to the minimum required lot size for single-family residential lots in the Lacy Palm subdivision phase one B. This variance would comprise of seven lots, would generally be these lots here along Bamboo Park, Bamboo Palm Circle. When this was planted back in two thousand and one, there was a fence encroachment which wasn't addressed. At this point, the adjacent property owner, the abutting property owner, has a fence which is encroaching ten feet into this property, and he's claiming adverse possession of that property. This is the plant of those, which includes those seven lots, and the encroachment again is about ten feet into those properties, so when these lots were planted, they were fifty by one-twenty, now these lots would generally be about fifty by one-ten, which is a little over fifty-five hundred square feet, which still allows for a single-family residential house. There is a case history where a similar variance was granted back in two thousand and one, and actually the lot was actually smaller, it was about fifty-two hundred square feet. So there's a case history, one has been granted in the same subdivision. This is a closer look of the subject property, and this is the subject property where the fence is currently encroaching, the lots would generally be in this area here. And again, there'd be, these are the subject property. Request went before the P&amp;Z Commission, P&amp;Z Commission is recommending approval of variance. Again, the hardship in this case is that, one, you already have a case history, one has been granted, plus the adverse possession affects these properties from being sold and developed and getting a clear title of the property, which is the reason they're applying for the variance and replating the subject lots. I'll take any questions on the item.
What's the status of the adverse possession case? Are they in court over that? Have they done anything, or is he just threatening to do it, the Jason Lando?
It's my understanding he's threatening to do that, and their attorney advised him that the subject property owner does have a good case to retain that property, so in order to proceed with the selling of that property, getting a clear title.
This was subdivided way back when?
Two thousand and one.
And the appraisal district probably has the lot sizes, you would think, on there.
Right.
You'd be paying tax on them.
Right, correct.
Okay, well, we have before us a, an item which is to grant the variance, is there a motion to grant the variance?
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item ten, consider take action to approve ordinance on first reading to grant Texas Gas Service Company the right, privilege and franchise to use the streets, alleys, thorough fairs, and other public rights and way in the City of Harlingen, Cameron County, Texas to operate and maintain a natural gas distribution system.
This is, obviously, the city had a franchise ordinance with Texas Gas Service that has come to an end, that's why it's before we review that franchise ordinance, fairly standard, it's twenty-five, it's for twenty-five years, which is fairly standard. The franchise ordinance pays us the highest rates that Texas Gas pays to any entity, which is approximately five percent. There's sort of a graduated list of payments, five percent of gross receipts, it goes down based on the types of product they're talking about, whether it's in transit or not, but essentially, and so we had been, it's been on the agenda before, the reasons for that, we had asked for a couple of changes, we had worked that out with Texas Gas, and then there was a little delay, because they had to run it through their various administrative offices up in Kansas and other locations, and we're ready to go, everything's in order, we're all in agreement, and we recommend that approval.
And we do have representative of the gas company in the audience?
Mr. Larry Graham is here with Texas Gas, if you have any questions.
Read the caption.
An ordinance granting to Texas Gas Service Company the right, privilege and franchise to use streets, alleys, thorough fairs, and other public ways to operate, maintain a natural gas distribution system in the City of Harlingen, Cameron County, Texas, providing regulations for the conduct of the system by the grantee and repeal of the present franchise ordinance.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved. Second.
Motion of the second, are there any, is there any discussion, any questions? All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Thank you. Yes.
Hi, Larry Graham with Texas Gas. I just want to thank Mr. Serna and Mr. Bilby for their cooperation and their work, we really appreciate it. And I have a couple of my colleagues here, Tom, who's the operations manager, and Naomi Prowlis, community relations, so we just want to say thank you, we appreciate working with you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Item eleven, consider take action to approve an ordinance on first reading amending Title Nine General Regulations, Chapter ninety, animals of the City of Harlingen Code Ordinance by creating Sections ninety point two seven A, animal defecation prohibited in certain areas, ninety point five seven, microchipping of cats and dogs, by amending Section ninety point ten, definition Section ninety point eleven, keeping of livestock and fowl restricted, Section ninety point two five, definition Section ninety point two six, vaccination of rabies, Section ninety point two seven, running at large prohibited, Section nine point three two, procedure for entitlement, Section ninety point three, interference and enforcement prohibited, Section ninety point four oh, humane treatment of animals. Okay?
Mayor Members of the Commission, in your packet you have a copy of the ordinance as presented by staff, you also have a copy of the existing Chapter ninety that includes all the amendments and deletions that staff proposed. When this whole started, when this whole process started, we formed a committee, an ad hoc committee comprised of Commissioner Yulhorn and Leal, we also had Amido Gonzalez as a help director, Shannon Harville on ACO, Pat Turman from the Humane Society, and one of our staff members and myself. We got together, went over, went through the entire ordinance, we looked at, I believe, five similar ordinances from across the state, and we came up with some suggestions, so what you're going to see tonight is the end result of those meetings and the recommendations for the ordinance. Now, one of the things that I did was, this is just a cleanup that I went through, we didn't discuss the file section in the, with the committee, but we have had complaints about roosters in the community, so I went ahead and made some adjustments here. We're recommending that we increase the distance between locations from two-hundred to two-hundred-and-fifty feet for keeping foul, and reducing the number from twenty to ten of files that you're allowed to keep in your home, your backyard, and prohibiting the sale of baby chickens or baby ducks, allowed only in pet stores or shops. In the past, especially during Easter season, we've seen on occasion where someone is selling baby chickens on the side of the road, and that's very dangerous, so we want to eliminate that. This was the only change we recommended in livestock and foul section. In Chapter ninety, under the dogs and other animals, we made a few changes. We added new definitions, abandonment, abused, animal control officer, and animal control office, health statement, microchip, neutered, owner, tattoo, and veterinarian. They weren't, they were sort of implied in the ordinance, but we went ahead and just added the definitions for those to make it clear. We also amended existing definitions, there's a list of the ones that we went through and amended. These are the noteworthy changes that comprise the bulk of the changes to the ordinance. We're going to require a veterinarian when they're issuing rabies shot to a dog or cat to issue a certificate which contains the animal's microchip number, and for this year that's optional, because we're not making it mandatory until two thousand and seventeen. The species of the animal, the age or date of birth of the animal, and what's currently included is what you see is underlying, that's what we're requiring the ordinance right now. So those were just the changes that we made to the certificate. We also require a metal tag, which they do now, but we're just putting it in the ordinance, that the veterinarian's address be on the tag, and the year of the vaccination, and then it's up to the owner to actually affix that to the animal. And this is where we spend the majority of our time going over the charges. This is for running at large. We went through about three different versions of this, and this is finally the final version of the charges. For an altered dog, meaning that your dog has been spayed or neutered, for your first citation, your first offense, we want it to be zero dollars. For your second offense, it's going to be a hundred and sixteen dollars, and your third is a hundred and sixty-six. Again, that's for an altered dog or cat. For an unaltered dog or cat, first citation is going to be two hundred and sixty-six dollars. There are additional provisions that we're going to talk about in a few minutes for the first citation. Second citation is going to be three hundred and sixteen, and the third is three hundred and sixty-six dollars for a dog that has not been spayed or neutered. Now, one of the provisions that we made for your first citation for an unaltered dog or cat was that for first-time offenses, only for first-time offenses, we're allowing the owner to take the dog to get microchipped and spayed or neutered, and have their fine reduced by two hundred dollars if they provide proof of having done that. You don't have to do that, but if you don't, you're going to pay the two hundred and sixty-six dollar fine. If you want that reduced to sixty-six dollars on your first offense, you'll have to get the dog spayed or neutered and microchipped. That took a lot of back and forth in the committee, the Humane Society looked at those charges and they agreed, and they were comfortable with them.
I would, just for clarification, the unaltered dogs are the problem. They're the ones that get out and breed with your dog that's in your backyard safely sequestered, and so that's the reason for that, is that we're trying to get a handle on that, because that's where all of the problem lies, is with the unaltered dogs. I mean, euthanized three thousand dogs in two thousand and fifteen.
That's a good point, Commissioner.
I think the other point is the two hundred dollars is to allow them to cover the cost of paying to their vet.
Right, right, and the animal shelter does spay or neuter cats, they also microchip, or you can take the dog to your own veterinarian, that's up to the owner. One of the, under amended definitions, I failed to include kennel. We changed the number of animals in a kennel from four to six, so if you have six or more, you consider it a kennel, you have to have a kennel license. Continuing with the changes, we also made it unlawful for an owner to allow an animal to defecate on public property or improve private property. A defense to that is if the owner immediately removes the feces from the area. Too often, people still walk their dogs without any bags, and they allow them to do their business on other people's property, that's really not, that's not right, you should have it picked up. So we made that an offense of the ordinance. We also made it unlawful for any person to interfere with or obstruct an animal control officer while they're trying to apprehend an animal, and we also made it unlawful for an owner to attempt to take an animal from the officer or a vehicle. Now, we're allowing the animal control officers to cite the owner, whether the animal is impounded or not. Sometimes, if it's running at large, we'll give them a citation, they can still keep the dog without having to take the dog to the animal shelter. And one of the things that we really talked about too, that I think may help this problem is that we're allowing owners now to have up to five animals within the property, right now it's currently three, so we're going up to five. And then microchipping, this is one of the big areas that we spent a lot of time also. All dogs or cats must be microchipped within the city, but if you look at the bottom one, we're saying that all dogs not currently microchipped in the city must be microchipped by January first, two thousand and seventeen. So in two thousand and seventeen, it's going to become mandatory, that your dog or cat must be microchipped. Now, this is not going to apply to cats that are ear tipped. In other words, cats are allowed to roam out in the public, they've been spayed or neutered by the Humane Society, they're territorial, so they just leave them out there, they spay or neuter the cats, but they don't, they still microchip them, but we're not making that a requirement. And then some of the other provisions is that all dogs or cats will be microchipped before leaving the animal shelter. Impounded dogs shall be microchipped before they're released to the owner, and the owner shall pay the cost for that. And then all dogs or cats adopted from the animal shelter shall have a microchip. Those are pretty much the highlights to the ordinance. We did send a final copy of it to the Humane Society, they approved the recommendations that the committee came up with. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
The cost to microchip an animal?
The Humane Society charged seven dollars, I don't know what the veterinarian.
It's a nominal fee.
We're charging ten now, sir.
Ten, okay.
It's a nominal fee. For people that don't understand what that is, when they pick up your dog, they wave a wand over it, your name and address pops up, and they're able to call you, and you get your dog back without the possibility of it being euthanized before you get there to pick it up, so it's.
And the attempt is to try to get the dog back to its rightful owner before or without having to take him to the animal shelter. So increases, decreases work for them and for us as well. Staff is recommending approval of the ordinance, if you have any questions.
Okay, we'll get the city attorney to read the caption of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the City Harlingen amending Title Nine General Regulations, Chapter ninety, animals, the City of Harlingen Code Ordinance by creating Sections ninety point twenty-seven A, animal defecation prohibited in certain areas, and ninety point fifty-seven, microchipping of cats and dogs, and by amending Section ninety point ten definitions, Section ninety point eleven, keeping of livestock and fowl restricted, Section ninety point twenty-five definitions, Section ninety point twenty-six vaccination for rabies, Section ninety point twenty-seven running at large prohibited, Section ninety point thirty-two procedure for entitlement, Section ninety point thirty-three interference and enforcement prohibited, and Section ninety point forty humane treatment of animals, providing severability clause, ordaining other matters related to foregoing.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? And, Starman, are you support, do you support the ordinance?
Absolutely.
Okay.
She was very helpful in helping us to draft the ordinance, and so was Shannon Harville and Ramiro were there, along with Gabe, and it was a real collaborative effort, and it wasn't easy to come up with this, but everybody worked together to come up with something we could all live with, we think.
Well, I know we've been working on this for a while, and it took us a little while to get started, but.
We're there.
I'm glad that we're here at this point. So all those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. And I want to thank Commissioner Yulhorn and Commissioner Leal for taking a leadership role and making sure this project got done, so we could get this, try to make some sort of impact here, and help address the challenge that we've got in our community, so thank you. Item twelve, and thank you, Mr. Starman, and the Humane Society. Item twelve, consider take action to approve a resolution amending the Harlingen Downtown Improvement District twenty fifteen sixteen fiscal year budget.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commission. The agenda item before you is a request to amend the Harlingen Downtown Improvement District budget for fiscal year two thousand and sixteen. We're requesting to increase budgeted expenditures by four thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars for expenditures that were uncovered in fiscal year two thousand and fifteen but won't be paid till fiscal year, fiscal year two thousand and sixteen. I can answer any questions, and staff does recommend approval.
Okay. Is there a motion to, it's a resolution, is there a motion to approve the resolution amending the budget of downtown improvement district? Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item thirteen, consider take action to accept or reject bids and award the contract for the Harlingen Fire Station number two under bid number two thousand and sixteen oh one.
Good evening. This project consists of the construction of Fire Station number two at the corner of Stewart Place, Stewart Place Road and Brenneman Road. As you know, this item was tabled two weeks ago as the lowest bidder withdrew their bid. The second lowest bidder was submitted by Curic Enterprises LLC in the amount of one million five hundred and eighteen thousand, and can complete the project within two hundred and seventy days. Money has been identified by our finance director, and staff recommends award of the project to Curic Enterprises LLC.
Excuse me, Mayor, can we move this off the table? Do we move it back off the table? It's been tabled.
Yes, we'll need to move, we'll need to, we need a motion to remove this item from the table.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, so, staff, the staff's recommendation is to award the bid to.
Yes, Mayor, the one million five hundred and eighteen thousand dollar bid is inclusive of all the alternate bids. Staff is recommending approval, I did meet with LVA today, and we did identify some additional funds left over from other bond projects that we can utilize, so we do have the money to do the project and all the alternates, so staff is recommending approval, so that we can move this project forward and get it going.
Okay, and staff satisfied that the contractor's qualified?
Yes, sir, John Piercy, our architect, is here, he made some several calls and talked to the several folks, and all the comments we got back were positive, unless I'm wrong about that, John?
They were all positive.
Very positive, and they were, they weren't fire station projects, right? But they were similar-sized projects and similar cost?
Correct.
So, if you see this, or we go back out with bids, and concerned going back out with bids that the prices may go up, and so we think, we think we should move it forward and get this project started. Staff is recommending approval.
Are we doing this without making any revisions to the?
It's bond funds, so that we wouldn't have to revise the current year's budget.
No, no, I mean the, the structure, we didn't make.
We did not.
Exactly the way it's bid?
Exactly.
Okay.
And John did a great job of designing it, and we liked the design, and we want it forward and get it built.
I think that it's important, because this is kind of going to, we've talked about that this has a residential look to it, and it's going to be across from residential area.
Correct.
We do all of the alternates that were in there, because some of those were to give it that residential look, and we ought to do it like it was designed and do it right the first time.
And moving forward, if there's an opportunity to save some dollars here and there with John's expertise, then we'll look at that through a change order. But right now, we're asking to award the bid as is.
Is there a motion to award, accept the bid and award the contract to Curic Enterprises?
I'd like to make that motion, Mayor.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. This is good, this has been a long time.
This is good.
Coming, this is good. All right, item fourteen, consider take action to approve an ordinance on first reading to amend the City of Harlingen budget for fiscal year two thousand and fifteen and sixteen.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commission. The agenda item before you is a request to amend the City of Harlingen's fiscal year two thousand and sixteen budget. We are requesting to increase budgeted expenditures and revenues to cover unbudgeted capital expenditures, new grants awarded, and expenditures incurred in fiscal year fifteen, which will be paid in fiscal year two thousand and sixteen. The detailed changes are included in your agenda packet. The, the detailed changes are included in your agenda packet, but we would like to make a note that we will be making a change to Exhibit A and Exhibit B, as well as the ordinance. We'll be reducing budgeted expenditures by ten thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight from the general fund, so the revised total expenditure should be seventy-one million nine hundred and ninety thousand six hundred and eight.
What was that number again?
The, the total expenditure should be seventy-one million nine hundred and ninety thousand six hundred and eight.
Okay. Most, most of these are project-related, a lot of them are related to just expenditure from fund balance of, of different funds for projects, so, is there, is there a motion to, oh, we need to read the word, caption.
An ordinance amending the revenue and expenditure budget for the City of Harlingen Texas for fiscal year October first, twenty fifteen through September thirty, twenty sixteen, total budget revenues will increase to, is that the seventy-one million?
The total expenditures will increase to seventy-one million nine hundred and ninety six hundred and eight thousand.
Not, not the revenues. The revenues remain at sixty-eight?
The revenues will remain at sixty-eight.
The revenues will remain the same.
Okay, so, revenues will increase to sixty-eight million eight hundred and four thousand five hundred and fifty-two, and total budget expenditures will increase to seventy-one million nine hundred and ninety thousand six hundred and eight dollars respectively, providing the publication of the caption of this ordinance and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved. Second.
Any questions, any other questions? All those who have a say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, signed, motion carries. Item fifteen, board appointments.
No. None.
Act two, Harlingen Proud Advisory Board, Lisa Graves, Parks Advisory Board, Adele Cudd.
I have four, well, two reappointments, Amiro Gonzalez to the animal shelter, David Weiss to the planning and zoning commission, and then to the tenants' board, Linda Shelvin, and to the senior citizens' board, Deborah Chips.
Okay, is there a, oh, you don't have any, is there a motion to approve board appointments?
So moved, Mayor. Second.
All those who have a say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, signed, motion carries. Item sixteen, citizen communication.
We have Pat Turman, who I introduced to the Humane Society, Emily Cook.
I actually came today with good news. Our two thousand and fifteen numbers, we are one thousand twenty-four animals less this year than last year. We spay neutered two thousand nine hundred and ninety-three public animals, not counting our adopted animals. Our rabies clinic saw five thousand six hundred and ninety-six animals, and between the shelter, the spay neuter clinic, and the rabies clinic, we microchipped three thousand five hundred and fifty animals. So, the spay neuter is working, and thank you, gentlemen, for listening and understanding our problem, and what you've done tonight will go a long way in helping us, because the quicker we can get an animal back home or into our system properly without euthanizing for space helps us tremendously, so thank you very much.
That's my dear lady, congratulations on that, great performance. Is there anyone else?
That was it. No more.
That was it, all right, then, thank you very much, our meeting is adjourned, good night.